Good evening. Welcome to Council, City Council, Tuesday, March 20th. We just, we convened from closed session, so sorry for the delay. So we will start with a call, a roll call. Oh, sorry, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. My bad.
Should we go ahead?
Okay.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the two of us here from the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Now roll call.
Mayor Pollard.
Here.
Vice Mayor Herman.
Here.
Councilmember Beehill.
Here.
Councilmember Matildee.
Here.
Councilmember Olivera.
Here.
Previously, we were with closed session and direction was given to staff to form a committee with two councilmembers, Olivera and Beal, and they will be bringing back to Council our risk and liability regarding, regarding a closed session. Sorry.
Regarding power operations.
For, for power operation. In front of us, we have the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move. A second.
Any other comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to adjust the Council on any matters not on the agenda. They are prohibited for City Council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Is there any public comment? No, okay. Item number five, concert agenda. We have one item, approval of the minute from the regular meeting of March 6, 2018. Is there any comment?
I'm about to pull that out.
Pull it, okay. Okay, go.
Oh, just on the action B. On the, on the action, I think we should put the $65,000 amount, itemize that in the action as we did with C and...
Okay.
So we know how much we'd eventually approve.
I can do that and bring it back to the next council.
Okay, we can approve a subject to that change, right?
Excuse me?
Can we approve that subject to that change?
Yes.
It's a small change.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comment? Public comment? Nope, okay. Is there a motion to approve the edit?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number six, public hearing, hearing on order of abatement for 1191 South Main Street, the Load Hotel. And I was going to turn it over to staff to kind of start us off with this.
Sure, this is, I'll provide a brief overview over the contents of the hearing here. We have, today we have an abatement hearing for the city to determine whether or not a nuisance exists at the property located at 1191 South Main Street, the Load Hotel. First, I'll provide just a brief overview of the, of the hearing standard. The mayor will preside over the hearing. City staff will, will present evidence and the city has the burden of proving that a nuisance exists. The standard for administrative hearings such as this is an informal standard. We're not talking about rules of evidence in court, in a court. It's a, it's an informal process. Generally, the city has to prove by a preponderance of the evidence more likely than not that a nuisance exists at the property. And so that's the general standard. You see in the agenda packet, there's a lot of information, a lot of documentation which constitutes some of the evidence that's currently in the record, which will be supplemented by oral testimony at, at the hearing today. And as far as the hearing process goes, city staff will make a presentation. We're recommending up to 30 minutes for the presentation. After the city staff's presentation, the property owner will have an opportunity to ask questions to the staff. That's as provided under the city's municipal code. And thereafter, the property owner will have an opportunity to make a presentation, similarly up to 30 minutes if desired. And the city staff may choose to ask questions after that presentation and then we'll turn it over to the City Council. And then after the City Council asks questions, there'll be an opportunity for some final comments and some public comments. Thereafter, we will deliberate, the City Council will deliberate in closed session and return back to open session to issue its decision. And I can guide you along each step of the way.
Yeah, thank you.
So I think at this time, what we, what you should call for is for city staff to make a presentation.
And everyone understand the rules going through because keep it within the scope of what is, what is in front of us to keep the time, time going. So first up, who is staff?
David Hahn, planning director, director of planning building. We're going to start off and then if there are questions regarding the building, Steve Flag is here, our building inspector, so he's also here to answer questions as well, as well. So we'll have both, both of this covered. And just kind of give you a brief recommendation, staff, or just kind of give you some background. Loads hotel, the Load Hotel has been in the city for, since the turn of the century. Load Hotel is once an active business and in a state of good repair. Over the years, the city, the building has been deteriorating due to lack of maintenance and repairs. Previously, since December 2000, December 16, 2008, the City Council considered enforcement action against the property and issued an order to abate the nuisances at the property to the property owner, Mr. Tim Ashlock. Over a year later, after multiple delays, Mr. Ashlock reported to the City Council that he had fully complied with the abatement order on January 5, 2010. At that time, city staff agreed with the property owner that the safety issues, the safety issues of the building had been met. And for those of you that don't know, there were some leaning issues, some structural issues that were, that were, that had the, that was going on with the hotel at the time. Those were, those were, those were taken care of. That's been it. Since 2000, since 2010, the property is falling in a state of disrepair and is no longer habitable. On occasions, homeless individuals have broken into and squatted on the property. Trash and debris continue to pile up inside the property as well as outside. On one occasion, a second story window of the Load Hotel detached from the structure and crashed onto Main Street. Fortunately, no individuals in that incident. No, no one's injured in that incident. As part of the abatement process, chapter 2.60 of the Angels Municipal Code define the procedures for the city to abate nuisances. And basically is include, and is included as a copy as an attachment six of your, of your packets. Conditions that constitute a public nuisance are defined in the Angels Camp Municipal Code in chapters 8.24 and section two point, and section, excuse me, 2.60010. For example, buildings that are abandoned, boarded up, or partially destroyed may constitute a public nuisance. If the code enforcement officer determines that a condition has been created or maintained on private property which constitute a public nuisance, the code enforcement officer shall issue a notice order to abate. Notice in order to abate should contain identifying information for the property, a finding that conditions on the property constitute a public nuisance, a list of corrections, a deadline for abatement, and a description of the city's potential remedies if abatement is not realized. And that's as part of Angels Camp Municipal Code, sections 2.60030, paragraphs A, 1 through 5, the code enforcement shall cause a notice in order to abate. If, if the property owner fails to correct the violations within the time specified in the notice in order, the City Council may schedule a hearing to consider further abatement action by city staff. At least 10 days prior to the abatement hearing, notice shall be served upon the effective property owner. Notice of abatement and hearing shall describe the conditions alleged to constitute a nuisance and indicate possible actions which may be authorized for abatement of the nuisances. At the abatement hearing, the City Council shall hear and consider all our relevance, I mean, the council kind of went over that as part of the initial, but that's cited as part of Angels Camp Municipal Code, 2.60070, paragraph B. As well as interested parties may be represented by council, in which case the city attorney shall represent the code enforcement officer and parties may present testimony and cross-examine witnesses. If the City Council finds that a public nuisance exists and that there is sufficient cause to warrant abatement of such nuisance, the City Council shall issue the order to abate. The City Council may issue such an order to abate by resolution. If the City Council has issued the order to abate, the city administrator shall serve the order to abate upon the effective property owner as, as required by our code. And if the property owner abates the nuisances at his or own expense in accordance with the order to abate, the city abatement proceeding shall terminate. So basically, if we, based on all the things tonight, if they, if the property owner claims it all up within a certain timeframe that you're given, then the abatement hearing goes away. Let's kind of get to the discussion of the project. I mean, on multiple occasions, city staff has attempted to work cooperatively with the property owner to clean up the building and abate the nuisances on the property. However, there have been no positive response from the property owner. City staff sent the property owner several notices and orders to abate which outlined the conditions found on the property to constitute a nuisance. The code of, the code of violations of American, the Angels Code, Angels Camp Municipal Code and the California Building Code, which the City Council adopts as part of an ordinance and resolution. So the California Building Code, associated by reference is, is part of the Angels Creek, Angels Creek, Angels Camp Municipal Code. A listing of existing conditions and code violations that constitute nuisance is provided below. Pictures of the existing conditions at the property are included as attachment seven. City staff believes that actions to abate the nuisances may necessitate demolition of the building due to extensive deterioration and code violation of the property. And kind of give you kind of where we've been, code enforcement actions by city staff. Basically, it's, we started this in November 2010. The city received a number of complaints regarding activities occurring on the property. Based on these complaints, the city building and fire departments performed visual inspections of the property and found that numerous code violations of the ACM, Angels Camp Municipal Code and the California Building Code. On November 7, the city staff sent a notice to, an order to abate via certified mail to the property owner, which is seen as attachment two. It also outlined staff's observations and various code violations. The November 7 notice also established a deadline of November 22 to abate the nuisances. The property owner failed to abate the nuisances by the deadline and provided no response to the notice. On February 9, city staff sent another notice in order to abate via certified mail to the property owner, addressing the nuisances and code violations of both Angels Camp Municipal Code and the California, and the California Building Code, which is seen as attachment three of the packet. The February 9, 2018 notice established a deadline of February 26, 2018 to abate the nuisances. The February 9 notice also included an option for the property owner to elect for a 90-day extension to the deadline to abate the nuisances upon showing, showing of diligence and good faith to abate, to do the abatement. On February 16, city staff again contacted and left a voicemail for the property owner to inform him of the February, February 9, 2018 notice. On February 26, the property owner contacted and left a voicemail for city staff stating that he would pick up the notice from his PO box. However, the property owner has failed to abate the nuisances by the deadline, did opt for a 90-day deadline extension and provided no further response to the notice. He did, and he did pick up the notice on the 27th, from my understanding. On March 15, the city received a letter from the property owner, letter stating that Mr. Ashlock has been cleaning up the front and back of the property since February, since February 28, 2018. In the letter, Mr. Ashlock also requested a 90-day extension to clean up and abate the remaining nuisances. Given the history of the abatement actions at the property, the delay in requesting the extension and the proximity of the hearing date, city staff does not recommend that an extension be granted. Further, the extent of the nuisances are not limited to the front and the back of the property. The condition of the property and its potential harm to the public health, safety, and welfare warrants further enforcement actions without delay. Due to the property owner's repeated failures to abate the nuisances as directed in the notice of orders to abate, the city staff is forced to proceed via the abatement procedures outlined in the, in chapter 2.60 of the Angels Camp Municipal Code. On March 9, 2018, city staff sent via US mail to the property owner, PO box and conspicuously posted on the property a notice of abatement hearing, which is attachment four. By the way, we were posting all notices on the building as well. So not only were we mailing them, but we were posting them, my understanding, Steve, we were posting them on, on the building. So it wasn't just via mail, they were also going on the building. The notice of abatement hearing also informed and gave notice to the property owner that he had a right to be heard on this matter at the City Council hearing on March 20th, where we are tonight, at 6 o'clock. To date, there's been no action taken to abate the nuisances on the property. With compliance with the Angels Camp Municipal Code for nuisance abatement, city staff and code enforcement officer have determined that the existing conditions and code violations at the property constitute a public nuisance as defined by the Angels Camp Municipal Code. In compliance with chapter 2.60 of the Angels, Angels Camp Municipal Code, the code enforcement officer sent the property owner a notice in, in order to abate on November 7, indicating the deadline of November 22 to abate the nuisance as directed, on February 9, indicating the deadline of February 26 to abate the nuisances as directed, as required by the Angels Camp Municipal Section Code 2.0. Both notices and orders to abate contained identifying information for the property, a finding that conditions on the property constitute a public, should be a public nuisance, a list of corrections, a deadline for abatement, and a description of the city's potential remedies if abatement is not realized. As the property owner did not abate the nuisances on the property by the deadlines in the notices and orders to abate, city staff proceeded with the abatement procedure outlined in the code. Of course, city staff scheduled the abatement hearing for tonight, March 20, 2018 pursuant to the Angels Camp Municipal Code. We served, we served by mail to the property owner and conspicuously posted on the property a notice of abatement hearing. The notice of abatement hearing describes the conditions alleged to constitute nuisances and indicated possible actions which may be authorized for abatement of the nuisances. Below, that's when we get to the existing conditions. These conditions have been in, these, these conditions and code violations have been stated since the November 7, and since the first, the first notice that we sent. One, trash and debris at the rear of the building consists of household furnitures, appliances, discarded building materials, and cuts, weeds, and brush. This condition violates the code, Angels Camp Municipal Code, including paragraphs CF, GHI, and J below, which we, which I will, I will go over. Land configuration, which is potentially dangerous to public health. There's a large excavated area at the rear of the building, approximately 30, 30 feet by 30 feet by 10 feet. This condition violates Angels Camp Municipal Code, including paragraph CG and I below. Structure is not weatherproof. Rain runoff has been penetrating the structures through holes in the wall, holes, void, and foundation from the roof and from windows. This code, this condition violates the Angels Camp Municipal Code, including paragraphs BC and I below. The maintaining of the property in a manner that is unsightly because of accumulation of junk, lack of property maintenance, lack of protection to the exterior walls because of no paint, backside of the building exposed to the elements. The conditions violate the Angels Camp Municipal Code, including paragraphs BCF, GHI, and J below, and violating building standards for habitable dwellings by, among other things, failing to provide adequate sanitary and water facilities for the structure located on the property. All water and drain pipes are substandard and/or missing throughout the structure. This condition violates the Angels Camp Municipal Code, including paragraphs D below. And basically, these are the code violations that we have found. One, A, buildings which are bounded and boarded up or partially destroyed. Buildings which lack adequate weather protection or contain broken windows constituting potentially hazardous conditions and inviting trespassers and malicious mischief. Angels Camp Municipal Code, section 2.60010D3. Buildings which are so defective and unsightly in such a condition or deterioration of disrepair has to diminish the enjoyment use of property values of surrounding properties. Angels Camp Municipal Code, sections 2.60010, paragraph D, sub-paragraph 5. Maintaining dwellings and structures that lack toilets, sinks, showers, kitchens, plumbing and approved water connections. Now, that's based on the 2013 California Building Code. See note, the CBC was adopted by the City Council and is considered part of the Angels Camp Municipal Code, section 15.04020, is building, under buildings in construction. Maintaining dwellings and structures without adequate egresses, which is California Building Code. Storage of discarded furniture, appliances, and household goods that are stored in areas visible from public rights away or neighboring property and that create conditions detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare, which is Angels Camp Municipal Code. Conditions which may be detrimental or dangerous to children, Angels Camp Municipal Code 2.06010. Placement of junk, rubbish, refuge, and other obstructions in public alleyways and rights away. And I, maintenance of the property in such a manner as to constitute a nuisance is defined by the Civil Code, in Civil Code, section 4380, and that constitute an annoyance, offense, and injury to the public. And then J, storage of rubbish through the property in a manner that is detrimental and prejudicial to the public and surrounding properties. At this time, staff believes there may be additional violations inside the property. However, the fire department, however, the fire marshal has not been able to inspect the inside of the building. What we did, what I do want to provide is that you did get photos that were put in your packet. Hopefully, hopefully this comes out. Okay. I don't know, can the screen go down a little lower? I don't know if I can, oh, I'm sorry to adjust. But these are just some of the pictures that are, that are part, that are, that were, and these were taken a year and a half ago. So at this point, we haven't been in, the city hasn't even been in the building. We haven't been able to get into the building for at least a year and a half at this point. Side. Some storage of wood, materials. Some more storage of materials. So this is, I'm assuming the outside, the back of the building. Again, some more of the outside of the building, back. Side. Building again, storage of stuff. This is part of the pipe system. I'm assuming this is inside the building. Don't know if this has been corrected or has been, has been improved. No building permits have been, no building permits have been pulled on the building. Boarded up windows, where people have been, people have been breaking in.
Dave, would permits be required to do any of those repairs?
All of it.
All of it?
Yeah. Just kind of indoors, fire pulls in the structure. Outside, kind of on the side of the building there. More inside, I'm not quite sure if this is upstairs. Again, you can kind of see the deterioration. You can see the light from the outside, from the inside. Not quite sure about, more of the water, water shoes. More deterioration on the inside. Again, this is stuff that's inside the building. I don't have any idea. If I'm going too fast, people just go ahead and, or slow down. Just kind of give you the idea, some of the wood, again, some of the flooring. I'm not quite sure if it's the bottom store or the top one. It's probably the bottom, that's what I was thinking. Kind of looking it up. And that's the last one that I have, so. So at this time, again, we haven't been on the inside of the building to get in there really to inspect and what's need to be done. Basically, alternatives, I mean, council has, you know, regarding the nuisance abatement, of course, you adopt, adopt resolution 1814 to find that a nuisance exists in the property and in order to the abatement of the property, provide instructions to staff regarding resolution 1814 or the, of the abatement, or three, decline to move forward with any further abatement action. Kind of, just kind of give you some, some of the financial impact. You know, over the last 20 years, cities have expended significant resources for city engineers, city attorneys, city planners, building officials, structural engineer, outside structural engineers, to monitor, conduct code enforcement activities, and seek abatement of the public nuisances at the property. If the property owner fails to abate the nuisances and the City Council orders nuisances to be abated by city staff, the cost for city staff to abate the nuisances, which may necessitate demolition of the building, is estimated to range between $60,000 to $150,000 based on initial estimates. We gave you an estimate of about $59,000, $60,000 at one of our meetings. That was an informal, that was, that was the only thing that we've gotten. We've talked to other people. We haven't gotten any formal, but they had additional tasks on there. That wasn't just taking down the building and cleaning the site, there were additional things added on. But I wanted to put a range because until we get in there, until we figure out what it is, I wanted to make sure that at least we're covered in one way or the other. The city did not budget this item in the current 1718 budget and due to potential cost of abatement of the property, city staff recommends that this item, should the City Council elect to proceed with the payment, be budgeted in the 1819 fiscal year, which is not that far away. I mean, we're talking, what, a couple months, three months? Staff is, if, should the City Council vote to move forward with the abatement process, staff will proceed with formal bids to implement the city's council decision. That's all I have right now. And that, and basically, staff is pretty much recommending that, based on my, in the beginning of the, the City Council adopted resolution 1814 to find that a nuisance exists and to order the abatement of the building located at 1191 South Main Street, Angels Camp, by the way, is known as the, AKA, the Load Hotel. So Steve's here to answer any questions. If you have any questions in the meeting regarding the building, he'll help you answer those. With that, that concludes staff's report.
Does council have any questions?
Not this time.
I have one question.
Uh huh.
Can you use your microphone?
Under the, under the code, I think we should follow the code. It's the property owner has a chance first to ask questions and then the City Council will have an opportunity.
Absolutely. Okay. Is Mr. Ashlock here?
I am.
Okay, your turn.
If, if he wants to ask questions of staff or if he wants to move straight to his presentation, if he has a presentation.
Do you have any questions for?
I don't believe I have questions, no.
Okay. So.
At this point, he'll have an opportunity to make his own presentation if he would like to do so.
Do you want to make a presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I can't think of a place I'd rather be. And everything that I heard was read so loud that I really didn't hear it. However, I really think that for you as a council to get a perspective of the place, maybe you need to go there yourself because I couldn't even make much out of these photographs. But to give you a little background, and I will pass out some sheets, I think maybe I made a big mistake a long time ago buying the load. It has been a nuisance to me constantly. And as you can imagine, with the rich information that Steve and Dave have in their files, it has been unrelenting pressure constantly on me for the last 10 years. It obstructs trips, it obstructs vacations, it obstructs other things that I need to do in various parts of the, of the country. But moreover, the biggest concern that I had from day one is that I could not get a permit from anyone in the county here in the city to start doing the kind of repairs that Dave was just showing you were slides, like the outdoor boarding up and windows. I had all those purchased and I couldn't get a permit to put a single window in. And my letter there sort of is a very, very brief summary of, of what I feel that is my position that I have gone through in the last 10 years trying to cooperate with the building department, do what is right, and make the building at least attractive to the city. and make the building at least attractive to the city of Angels Camp. One of the last things I note on there was my frustration with, if you have been visiting and going by the load for many, many years, you notice that the front looks a lot better than it used to. It's been re-boarded, repainted. And where the ugly part exists up high is where all of that was stopped. I have really never felt at ease about doing anything because of the non-cooperation that I felt that I was getting from the building department. Now, right now, and since last November, any of the, there is no debris back there. There is a trailer with a piece of metal in it. And there is two working stoves that are down in the area that would not be visible from anyone that are covered. And there is one tub, a cast iron tub, that I haven't been able to find for people that could move it. However, a lot of people are using them for planters these days. And that's, and there's a small stove, also very heavy. So a stove, the refriger, the old bathtub is the only thing that is out. And this is an area that, on a road, that is only used by a good neighbor, Mr. Larry Tussoni. It's not even on a public or a, it's, it's all private back there and has, should have no access. I have not, in being down there continuously, at least every three weeks, cleaning up debris, making the walkways clear, there is no trouble for anyone to get anywhere around the place. But in this last abatement issue, one of the things that was said is, okay, take care of the drainage and piping and plumbing issues. When I first got the building, everything was being torn out so that it could be redone and replaced. But then we couldn't get permits. It then came along the, where the city says you absolutely have to do these certain things. So the first thing that we really lost was the front deck. So I was forced to take the deck away. Now that distracts from the city. Then it became the rear section, which housed the old bocce ball court. It had two rental units in the back that the previous owner had set up. And I couldn't put posts or pilings or piers underneath it fast enough to get past the order that you have to do something by this certain, certain date. I complied. I had to bring a wrecking crew in and that building had to be destroyed. And it's like, to me, I have to destroy things and then I have to fix them because I'm being ordered to destroy them. This whole room that was perfectly good, the storage was good, everything about it, from the standpoint, with the exception of some supports that would, were needing to be replaced, had to be taken down. And that, I'm left with an excavated area, which, one of the conditions in 1 through 6 on the abate program. It's so hard to tell you or start from any particular point, so I'll probably have to take questions. But this abate letter was mailed or written on February 9th. I received it on February 27th. I was out of the area and could not get back. I called in and held, had the post office hold it so that I could make sure I would get it. I complied and answered it within a 15-day period of time, which is the March 12th letter that you should have in your possession. I have always tried to comply. I have always tried to be a good neighbor. I have not had a complaint from any neighbor over anything. So I don't really know where they're coming from. I constantly don't get answers on who is the complaint, who could I talk to, what is their concerns? There are people in this audience here that has helped me move the big constitution, which was a refrigerator and something else, from another property that was sitting on, at the load temporarily. So work has been done there, weed eating, cleaning. However, it's not going to be pretty and it's not going to stay pretty. I'm, my long term, as I noted in the letter, is now short term for me. Whatever, I'm going to basically request a reprieve for a long enough time to get through this year so that the property can either be moved to someone that can partner with me on a restoration or sell the load. Because it has become the only, the time that I had some financial wherewithal to do all of this, as the letter notes, I couldn't do it. Couldn't get a permit, couldn't put windows in, can't do this, you can't do that. And if you do do that, you have to do plans and specification that require an engineer and engineering all the time. I'm pleading with you from the standpoint of, what good does it do me to keep complying with everything when it is no secret that this, at least the code compliance office and personally told to me that I want this building destroyed. I want it down, I want it gone. And for me to go out and work and constantly spend money to keep doing things to put off this time that, of destruction is, is extremely burdensome. And I have been extremely burdened by it, although I want to do a window. You know, the windows on the front can survive anything at this point. They're boarded in, they're screwed in, they're, they're board crossing. There's silicone on all glass and stuff like this. And when I told, you know, Mr. Flag about this, he said, I don't believe you. Just, I don't believe you. And what the, before I came up here, I don't even look at the notes now, but the, we were talking about the last time that there was an inspection done. I only have one copy of this. These are, these are letters to Mr. Flag in the office. Based upon them having to want to do an inspection, I gave two dates of inspection that I would be available to do it. And I never got a call back on it. So it's not that I have been postponing an inspection. I got a call on my cell phone. I live in an area where we've been under snow for the last four days and pre, and three days before that, we were under snow for another four days where I couldn't even get out. When I got eight, you know, six of 15 days are, I can't even move a truck that has a load in it that cleaned up a tree debris. You know, it's pretty hard to do something in 15 days to comply with the kinds of things that are being put forth in these abatement forms. I'll pass these out, whatever there are of them. This was the original part of this, which constitutes Fort Knox, the load.
Can you go to the podium, please?
Yeah. These are all plans professionally drawn by engineers for the support of the Load Hotel, meeting all the requirements of the city that was put forth as, as Dave had and spoke about just a while ago. The building is solid, it never did lean. In fact, if anything was leaning, it was the next building next door leaning on it. The inside does not have leaks. A piece of the metal roofing on the very front of the building had come up. That was put back down and supported this last November. So there are no leaks on the inside. There is no holes on the outside of the buildings for water to enter. There is an alleyway between the load and the property next door that gets a huge amount of rain off of the next door neighbor and a reasonable amount of rain this way. And so I have put sand things along that and other things to keep water from penetrating it. But even in the rain, in the worst flood conditions, you go inside the building and you can just see a couple of damp areas. So it's not that the building is remotely going to fall down. The air, the thing that is so unsightly to the city is the cosmetic looking part of it. And that's the boarded up sections and the, and the places that I wanted to do something with and have never been allowed to do anything. And I do note in there, I think Kay Simonson was with the department, the code department back when I was wanting to do all of this. And she may have been the one, how, if, if, I don't know if she was from the one that was from San Francisco or not, but that is, that, she said, no. We're going to off, offer you no permits for any kind of construction unless you get a plan to do the complete building in a restoration mode. And all, and pay all the costs and stuff of it. We talked to the fire department, we talked to, okay, what if we want commercial on the bottom? And we want residential on the top like it was? Okay, different codes for that. There's got to be so much space between that for ceilings. The building, I believe, is a landmark for Angels Camp, I really do. It was the front of the Great Backpack advertising campaign. Yet could that building get any help at all in getting a reface? No. And which is a shame because that was the building that the whole program was being the number one picture that they showed in all the slide presentations. It has been a long, long drag process. But I've tried to make the building safe as I possibly can, given the fact that I could not get permits to do anything else. And if the question of becoming where you're spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for something that Steve and his department wants torn down, it doesn't make good economic sense. So to me, it's a matter of hanging on until, there is one thing that's happening now. It houses the only access that I know of to all the underground caverns in the city of Angels Camp. All the caves, all the tunnels under the city of Angels Camp, this houses those. To me, if the city of Angels Camp was cooperative or we were always talking about bringing merchants in, bringing merchants in, bringing tourists in, we need an attraction. And I have spoke to Mary Kelly about this, I have spoke to the museum, I have spoke to others that said this could be very viable. But to my knowledge, it is the only access in Angels Camp for this and could be a gold mine for tourist dollars and other, and other things. Would it need to be rebuilt? It could be rebuilt on the first Wells Fargo jail site that is within the Load Hotel. I have the original gates. You know, I have so many things that with money, people could do without destroying the Load Hotel. There's other things that, that are available and that have, have websites that previously picked up some of this stuff. It would be great to get a GoFundMe page on doing all the repairs. But anything that is not, anything being required really at this point has thus far been not needed. And why put it, why take care of drainage when, you know, you're not going to build anything in it? City, the city of Angels arbitrarily cut off my electricity. So there's no fire danger, never was in the first place. It was a fine, working electrical system. It's just been one thing, it's really been a tug of war, people. And I'm sorry that I have to be in this position. I don't like it. I don't like being under continual harassment. There's not a day goes by that I'm not feeling harassed by one thing or another about the load. And I can only do so much. Questions?
So now the city staff has the opportunity to ask questions. And if, after that, then the council will have the opportunity.
Any questions from city staff?
You want to talk?
Sure, Glenn. Just stand up.
So do you have questions?
Sorry. Sorry.
It's kind of awkward, you gotta share the podium, man.
Basically, we have a number of questions. One is, is that the abatement, the original abatement process ended in 2010. Since then, there have been no actions from the city to the property owner since, since February 7th, 2017. At this point, the abatement process that was approved back in 2010 wasn't necessarily, they, the council basically just stopped it after the structure. It didn't continue with the original abatement. We, what we want to know is, there have been no building permit applications of any kind since 2000, even back to the last, the last action of 2010. There's been no action on the building. We, what, you know, what is, we, we would like to see a list of all the improvements that have been made in, in, on the building since then, since 2010? Besides, we know about the window that fell out because we had to address that. We had to address that when it came out. And so, and, and what improvements have been made? Because there were, there were inspection notices, there were, there were lists that were given to the property owner, I guess, see if you correct me if I'm wrong, back in 2010, regarding all of the, all of the structural, and Nathan, you can correct me too, if I, if there are anything, when you guys went through it back then. I don't think all of that has been, been rectified. So what, if there's a list of improvements, because like I said, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't touched, the city hasn't been active on any encroach, or any enforcement actions since the ending of 2010, until November 7th, 2017. So.
So I think, I think to summarize, the questions are to, the questions are to the property owner to provide, to indicate whether any building permit applications were submitted, at least since 2010. And to, if he has any information to provide, a list of the, any improvements to the building since 2010.
Can we say the question, please?
Sure, the question, the first question that was asked were, is, were any building permits requested or submitted since the previous abatement concluded in 2010?
No. And the reason for that is, I took it clearly from the, the party that I spoke to that initially said there would be no permits issued under any circumstances in the future. I took that and basically, to my knowledge, that still remains the thing. I mean, I couldn't get basically permits when we were talking about doing the deck restorations. Now, okay, let's, to make it a little bit clearer possibly is, if you are, said, I went in for a permit and someone says, well, we may give you a permit, if such and such and such is done, meaning all the inside is fixed, all this, all this and all this, if you can show this and do this, we may get a permit? I don't have, had no encouragement, and I'm totally, to me, I'm totally upfront in saying this. I've had no encouragement from the building department to do anything about that building because they want it down. And consequently, it's very hard for me to want to go to, out in a permit and say, why would I do the rewiring? Why would I pull out the copper pipes? You know, when we had to do the You know, when we had to do the restructuring in the back of the building for all of this pier work, which is all of these plans, it caused me to destroy virtually everything on the inside rear portions of the, of the load. There's massive amounts of concrete, massive amounts in the ground, sitting there, waiting to be a complete outside wall if necessary. The whole back is massive concrete. All the way around the backside is concrete. Hundreds and hundreds of yards of concrete, thousands and thousands of dollars of engineering fees to do all of this. And now I'm being picked on because the things that we had to open up to do all of this stuff is now showing in photographs. Next question?
Okay. The next question, I think you might have answered, but the, the question is, do you have a list or can you state, or, at the podium, the improvements that have, that you've done to the building since 2010?
That's again, I'm very, very leery to do any kind of improvements because every time that I'm at the building and somebody from the code compliance comes by, they stop. When I was refacing the building, as you might have noticed in that letter there, I had a professional crew there. I had all lumber. I had concrete pieces to go across the top. I had them all taken up the hill and professionally painted with a matching color that I noted in my letter was the only, only happy time that I had was meeting with Dave Hanna relative to him saying, "Hey, the color is good." But the day before, I had, I was stopped by Steve from doing anything any further. And then this process gets drawn out to, can you continue? And the crew that's brought all this metal scaffolding down and have up there so it's carefully done, so there'd be no spray paint on any cars or anything else, they have other jobs going on. If I can't get the okay to go on, then I have to go off and say, "Okay, guys, until this is resolved, it's, we can't go on any further." And that was, that was just recent. That was when? 2017? Like that? You know, I don't have all the dates catalogued here. I didn't think it would be, well, I didn't know what to expect, but did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Is that all the questions from, from staff?
No, there's still a couple more steps before we can get to public comment. So...
Now we turn it over to the city council to ask questions of the property owner or staff, as you see fit.
Are there any questions from council at this time for ideas?
I have a few.
Go ahead.
Are there any formal applications on file for that property anywhere?
No, there haven't been. I've been with the city for nine and a half years since June of '08. There's been no permit pulled except for the demo permit or the, for the, I don't know if there's a permit for the, for the, for the removing of the deck and the window. Not anything, there's a permit pulled for the window.
And there was a permit pulled for the, what is it?
Steve.
There was a permit issued in 2009 for structural repairs that Tim mentioned underneath. There were some concrete footings, some piers, some sheer walls that were put in place to stabilize the building. It in no way made the building structurally sound. It just stabilized the building. There was permits issued. He did the work. It was final. But nothing since then.
And that settled the abatement that concluded at the end of 2010?
According to the council, yes.
Okay. And then for Mr. Ashlock, have you actively pursued the sale of the property in recent years? Or?
I've talked to several realtors. I've looked at the current prices on existing properties that are down there. And frankly, I was waiting until the spring to put the property on the market because it's going to take, it's going to take a certain buyer, it's going to take somebody that loves old architecture, or it's going to take someone that's, is an entrepreneur, that is younger than me and more well-capitalized, and hopefully, as I've mentioned, someone that gets along with the building department to proceed in a direction that they want to do. Explore grants, explore many, many things that are out there and are alternatives, but it won't be me.
Have you had any unsolicited offers for purchase on the property?
I did, I, not a real genuine offer, but yes, I've had one offer about a year and a half ago.
So you mentioned in your opening statement that your, your plan now seems to be to seek out a buyer or a partner?
That's right.
Okay. And that's kind of where you stand with the property?
That's where I am.
And you're looking to hang a sign on it in the spring?
Now, I'm over 40 years old, and so consequently, I'm looking to do some other things with my life other than fight all the time.
But relative to the property, that's your, your action plan at the moment?
That's what I'm talking about.
Is, is hang a sign on it in the spring?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
And, you know, hopefully that can, you know, some new buyer will have all the information, have all the past history, as I've had on the, all the past history that was prior to me taking it over, I subsequently got. And so they should know what, you know, they would be getting into and, and what options there would lie for. I would hate to see, you know, a long period of time where there's a huge black hole in the middle, in the city, middle of the city. You know, right now, it's like, okay, the black hole, just the staircase between, you know, what used to be the pickle barrel and to the back lot. You know, I put in iron gates to keep access out. There's nobody that will get in and out of that building, and there has been no access by anyone to that building that I have been aware of, other than just rumor. And I've never seen a change on the inside. And so it is far more secure. In fact, when Mr. Flag posted the last thing on the back door, he cut the yellow tape out that I had over the area there. The floors, or at least it was gone and looked like it had been cut. Okay. But it was cut. I don't know. Okay. At any rate, it's as, more secure for a building that is in its kind of condition than a lot of others. I mean, even just looking at the cardboard cover over the walkway area where you want to keep people out, that wouldn't keep people out from being in danger. And I think that's what the city's responsibility is, right downtown Angels Camp.
Let me ask one more question of staff on that subject. There's reference in the material that there were homeless people in there from time to time. Do we have active police reports or complaints to the city that that was the case?
Not documented.
Nothing officially, nothing has been officially reported.
So then how did it end up in the city's report that that was an issue?
Well, basically, they were, when we, when we did some outside inspections, there was, before it was boarded up, there was, there looked like to be some people that were in the building.
So there was evidence of people camping there or whatever?
Well, there, at least from my understanding...
Yeah, and this was a long time ago. This is before actually Tim...
I'll say, this is before Tim secured it, so there have been, in the staff report I wanted to mention, not, it hasn't been current, but over the course of the time, there have been people that have been in the building. Not, not necessarily yesterday or a week ago, but over the course of this timeframe, there have been, we, we found that just on visual inspections, that there had been, there had been people there.
But you haven't been in there?
We haven't been in there for a year and a half.
Okay.
I have a question. I'm wondering, why hasn't the fire marshal been provided access in how many years?
He was there the last time we did inspection.
A year and a half?
A year and a half. Yeah, a year and a half ago.
So a year and a half ago, the fire marshal was permitted to inspect?
Yes.
And at that time, what were the findings? And I'm looking at, from the pictures, I don't know how old those are, but there seems to be a lot of wood, a lot of debris. Electrical, I guess, has been turned off since, I don't know how currently, you know, at the time of your inspection, what did you find?
Yeah, when, when I inspected the building, I guess it was about a year and a half ago from what they're telling me, is immediately what I noticed was the condition of the electrical. And so we had determined that PG&E needed to pull the meters to, you know, immediately cut off the power to, to have any fire from starting in that building. So that was our determination for doing an immediate fix to address some of the life health issues that could have been brought up from, or could have exposed the neighboring properties to fire damage. There was some significant fire loading, but not abnormal from what, you know, a normal operating building would be. And since there is no public entry into the building, that there wasn't a threat to public safety there, then our main concern was the electrical. And we had PG&E pull the meters to mitigate that emergency.
That was immediately after this inspection 18 months ago?
Correct. And there was no accumulation of any hazardous materials or anything like that. So that was our main focus and, and what we could do at the time.
Okay. So I understand no hazardous materials, however, regarding these photographs, is that relatively the condition that you found? Lots of wood? I saw plastic chairs? It looks like boxes, et cetera, just a bunch of stuff?
Right. That was, when I was in there, there was an accumulation of combustible materials and stuff, not necessarily any chemicals or hazardous materials or, you know, lead batteries or paint or anything like that. But just a, you know, an abundance of fire loading, we call it, or combustible material.
Okay.
I have a follow-up to that before you go. Mr. Ashlock said that the electrical was fine.
What?
So that's, so they're conflicting statements. What was wrong with the electrical that caused your concern?
I noticed visually upon my inspection, a number of open junction outlets exposed electrical wiring, you know, wiring that was not in conduit, wiring that was, you know, basically just in not, not sufficient state to have electricity running through it. And the concern was, at the time, there was water in the building with energized electrical equipment.
Any other questions?
I do have one last question, sorry. For Mr. Ashlock. You had stated that you spoke to the city and that someone said, "If you clean out the inside and improve this, that, and the other thing, then you may get a permit." Can you, can you tell us who said these things to you? Do you have any documentation whatsoever?
That was not, not for anything related to clean out or getting a permit. It was like when the deck was going to be repaired.
I specifically wrote it down because you said that someone from the city said, "If you clean out the inside and improve these certain things, then you may get a permit." And, I mean, in my opinion, that seems like a strong statement that you're claiming the city official said to you. And, and I was just wondering, is there, do you have any documentation?
I probably have some somewhere, and I don't know what it is, but it was like, I, I was going back over some old notes that I wrote, and I keep notes on various things as I go along. And the, the permit then that I was trying to pull was for the repair of the deck, because I wanted, basically, I wanted the building amongst other things to be qualified for the facade program. And the only way the permit would be, from my notes at this point, and that's what I was looking at after I referred to them today, was that was a requirement, that there was a lot of internal work because, as I'm told, there's a lot of stuff behind your structural facade that could be, need to be replaced. That would have been one of the concerns with the, the people doing the facade replacement. Is that okay? We opened this building up, and who knows, you know, this, there'll be a post or a beam that is dry-rotted or whatever, and would need to be done.
Thank you. Yeah.
I have a question. I was wondering, for Dave or Steve, just looking at, were the, the reason for denying smaller permits, was that because those permits would not assure the safety of, you know, more had to be done? The smaller things were not going to be enough? We had to have the bigger things done?
Go ahead, Steve.
To my knowledge, since I've been with the city, there hasn't been any permits that have been denied. So anything that happened before me, I...
So there's not been any requested? Would, would permits, like let's say, want to do something with the windows or something like that, would those, would the permission be given for those things even though they're not doing the bigger things? I didn't know if maybe structurally, there's some other problems, you got to do the structural things before you do the small things. I, you know, is it something like that or no?
Let's just say if Mr. Ashlock would have applied for a permit to replace the windows, and he had documentation, the application, information about the windows, I'm sure he would have been given a permit to replace the windows. So, like I said, I don't think I have denied anything.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question I have? Go ahead.
To Mr. Ashlock, you mentioned getting the February 9th letter, receiving it on February 27th. Did you respond to the November 9th letter?
I think I passed around...
I didn't, I didn't see anything responding to November's letter. I see the March 12th letter, and then you had a couple others that were dated prior to November 9th. They were October.
I believe one of those, I have one copy of it.
Yeah, those were dated, I think those were in October, if I'm not mistaken.
I responded to every registered mail, every registered mail.
Can, we, we need a mic.
I, I have responded to every registered mail that I receive. I would also respond to regular mail because I keep wondering why it has to always be registered mail for me. But at any rate, I don't know if it was not in that packet or whatever, but I know that there has not been a registered mail that I was in receipt of. Now, sometimes I'm gone at a month at a time, and somebody mentioned October, I'm gone for the whole month of October every year. So anything that would be required of me during that period of time would not, if I didn't receive it, I get mail, but I only get mail that after it's forwarded, and that is not always a guarantee that I'm going to get it. So the, anything that I get my hands on that shows a requirement of the city has always been responded to.
I have a couple questions for you.
Okay.
Given your statement that Veronica just asked you about staff telling you that you would not be granted a permit, given that, did you ever put in a complaint to City Hall per that response?
No, no, I didn't.
Okay. And then also, that, based on what, you have your plan for the restoration, correct? And it was supposed to be a three-phase plan?
It was supposed to be, yes.
It was in here during the 180 days, which was six months, did you ever, in that time, did you ever apply for a permit to extend, or ask for an extension for that phase plan to the city?
Was that the one you're talking about that was related to the shoring up of everything in the inside of the building?
I'm guessing so, yes. It was back in 2009, and it was mentioned that if, after the permit was pulled, there was six months otherwise, and a request for an extension. Was that ever done?
I'm not, I'm not aware of what that provision is or where it came into play from the standpoint of getting the paperwork, but I do not believe so. from the standpoint of getting the paperwork, but I do not believe so, no.
So, you never put in a request to extend the extension from that six months? To continue the restoration?
Not that I'm aware of.
Does staff have any record of any extension with the restoration plan?
No, we didn't receive anything.
Did you guys ever see, so fast forward now, between two thousand and ten and now, was there anything similar of that submitted to?
There's been no action from the city from, when the council kind of let the abatement go, till the first letter was sent November seventh. So, there's been no action either from the city, or from Mr. Ashlock, at least, to my knowledge.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Since two thousand and ten, there was a lot of activity, I want to say around thirteen, fourteen, with city council, or the city talking to you about repairs that necessary in the load, and I don't believe anything was done since between two thousand and ten and now, is that correct?
I don't really remember getting any notice.
Probably the only thing that, I take that back, the only thing that probably would have been done to windows, I don't think we got, we did a permit for the window that was, we didn't get a permit for the window that fell out of the building. So, any repairs or anything like that, that was probably, would be the only, because the deck was removed prior to the abatement hearings being done in two thousand and nine. So, that was one of the stipulations. And the, so the only action that we know about would be the window. Other than that, and we didn't do permit for the window. Okay. And then, Mr. Ashlock, you're applying, or you're asking for a ninety-day extension of this abatement order. Can you let us know, in the last three weeks, since you've got the letter, the twenty-seventh to today, have you done anything to show good faith, to show an effort that you want to?
On the day after receiving it, on the twenty-eighth, I went down and cleared up a lot of debris on the outside of the building that came down because of a tree, that we don't know if it belongs to the next-door neighbor or myself, but I had a call on it from Mr. Larry Tussoni. And that Sunday, in rain, I went down there and, with a tree faller, cut the tree up and removed it all, with the exception of small twigs and branches. And the day after receiving this letter, I went down and removed all the rest of it, and that sat in my truck for six days while we were trying to be plowed out.
So, the only thing that, if I'm hearing right, the only thing you've done in the last three weeks, or since you received this notice, is take care of a tree that fell that your neighbor called you about?
That's all I could take care of, sir. You know, I mean, I have eight days of shoveling, six hours a day.
Okay, but that's the extent of what's been done, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Just to follow, among the, along the same lines as Scott's question, among the things that are listed as existing conditions and code violations, is there a point-by-point statement you want to make about any of those that you think are in dispute?
I probably would, that I didn't address in the letter of March twelfth. But, they would be, yes, I would debate what is there as far as trash and materials that need to be moved. I used to have a trailer there that had a lot of building materials, paint, and some other stuff in. It did increase in size, as sometimes neighbors would come over and throw their stuff on the trailer as well. So consequently, all of that had to be gone, and there, I think, might be able to have testimony from someone else in here that knows about that. But, from the standpoint of actually, the condition and the kind of things that are mentioned in there are not the same as they are now. And I would also, was going to take issue with the drainage thing, because I don't know what you do to cure the drainage that isn't huge. And I'm not getting drainage from my building that is causing a problem. Only on severe watered-down, heavy-duty rains does the next-door building's roof without a gutter dump into the hallway that is right next, right between the two buildings, all this water. Most of it runs out and down the street after it goes down the alleyway, but I filled the holes, I put insulating foam and stuff where there was access in water. I've done what I can, but when it gets down to anything that is going to require a permit, I have not done that, I mean.
Is there anything to do about that buzzing? Do we reset anything, or?
That's, yeah, what's going on? Can the mics be turned down? They're awfully loud.
Or off and on again, or?
Maybe I should stay away from it further, does that help?
I'm not sure it's that mic, I don't know what it is.
The mics are loud and echoing. The mics are being loud and echoing.
Very.
Yeah, it's much more echoing. Oh, it's in there?
Okay, if there are no other questions from council, we will move on to a closing statement, am I correct?
That's right, at this point, the city staff has the opportunity to provide a closing statement.
Dave?
If desired.
Do you have a closing statement?
Actually, I mean, everything's pretty much in the report. I mean, we've pretty much covered most of those items. I think there's really no other additional stuff we can say at this point. But, no.
The property owner as well has the opportunity.
Do you have any closing statement? Do you have any closing statement? No, okay, okay. Yes, and then, no more, okay. And then, on to public comment. So, we're going to limit the public comment to three minutes, and no repeat. So, please get as much as you can in your three minutes.
These are public comments, not questions.
Can you help me with the timing?
Thomas, no questions?
Oh, boy, I'm under pressure. Hey, I'm, Tim's been my landlord for nine years. There's two things that I see. Before I ever met him, his wife asked me to paint a picture on the gold pans that I paint, of her husband's building, the Load Hotel, beautiful building. It, I mean, you know, wild, pink and purple, the balcony was purple, and the building was pink. This branding thing that came through town, they took a picture of that building. Now, it wasn't, like, a year later, city made him, somebody in the city made him tear down the balcony. Now, I don't know if that's the deck you're talking about, or, he's calling it a deck, the balcony. So, it looks like crap. It's an eyesore. Why can't we just fix the front of the building? Let him fix the front of the building. I can tell you, and I love everybody in the city, I'm afraid of them. Okay, but, the point is, you know, I'm kind of in the middle of this. I would suggest you go down, take a look for yourself inside that thing. I was surprised myself, and I've been called more times than I'd like to recount, to help Steve move things, and I can vouch. He's, what did I say? Tim, that's Steve. I mean, I get calls, we had the horrendous storm last winter, huge. Well, a window blew out, or something broke. Not surprising, but we got that thing up and cleaned up in an instant. But I think, get some creative, you know, things going here. Okay, that's all I have to say. The other thing, I mean, my kind of little dream, since I've started renting from him down the street, we've got the entrance to the Raspberry Mine there. That's what he's talking about. It's the entrance in Raspberry Street, it's a big deal, big Angels Camp story. You know, I always thought, yeah, it'd be great if we could get the load going, and just sort of maybe, maybe move into that building, or do something with that. Okay. But I would, I'd strongly suggest, go take a look for yourself, and then make an assessment.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, Debbie Pawnee, and I'm speaking for myself this evening. There's a letter in your packet dated two thousand and two, March sixth. And as I recall, I was on the city council at the point, at that time, and served as mayor, and this has been an issue since then, if not before. And as I review the letter and look at the information in it, not much has changed. It is an eyesore, it is a public safety, it is a nuisance, it is rat-infested. It has got electrical issues that I guess it's been taking care of, maybe with the fire department. But, you know, there has been promises after promises after promises, and not much has been happening. Two thousand and ten may have abated the front of it, you know? I guess beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but it was debilitated, and it was about ready to drop. I coordinated the Mark Twain Wild West Fest in two thousand and sixteen. Thankfully, the day of, nothing happened, the day after, a window shattered on the front sidewalk. That's exactly where we hold our Kit Carson Mountain Demon demonstrations, and tons of children were there just the day before. Thankfully, nobody was there the day that the window did blow out. We were looking for office space, and we looked all through downtown. And there was a building that's next to this particular building that was a potential site, had a great location for us. But after looking at the backside of this building, we wanted to rent it, and looking at the backside of the hotel, that's where I come up and actually saw for myself the infestation of debris, of garbage, of rats. It stunk, it has a stench. It may not have public access, but there's a lot of people who walk back there, who go back there to look around, to see what's going on, see what is happening in the back. There's a big orange fence in the back with a big hole in the ground. It's a danger to anyone who might go back there, whether they belong back there or not. And that's where the public safety concern is that I have. We have lots of tourists that travel around the city. They don't know the difference of public property or private property at times. So, I get real concerned when I do see people walking in the backside, and want to snoop around, or walk around, or whatever it might be. So, I encourage the council to follow staff's recommendation and pursue an abatement order. It's an eyesore, it's not a draw for visits to downtown. Maybe years ago, there was plans discussed about what it could be, but that hasn't happened in quite a number of years. And I don't see that happening at all anytime soon. And this documentation really talks about all the promises, and all the thoughts and ideas that have been made about this project, but nothing has happened.
Any other public comment before we close for closed session? Nope, okay. So, we now go into closed session? Okay. So, we, do they, so, we're going to go in here?
You want to wait for him?
Mr. Ashlock, we have a question for you. Would you be interested in pursuing a bond?
A what?
A bond, in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, and with a threshold of six months to fix everything?
I think the probably the short answer is no. And the reason that I say that is, I don't think that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would make a dent in what the load would need to bring it into an area. It's never been able to be rented since I bought it. It's never been able to do anything with it, but, you know, store some materials that I might have had to do the repairs, some of which now have been moved, most have moved out. But, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars probably wouldn't do it, and I certainly am not in a position to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of work in that hotel. It needs somebody that is well-capitalized, gets along well with the code department, and has a plan that they know they want to implement, versus speculating, like I did, on, and asking everybody relative to, what do you think would go here? Do you think it would be residential on the top? Could it be, you know, commercial on the bottom? And then, then, once you explore those and say, yes, that's viable, then you see all the engineering and stuff that would have to be done differently within the same building. And so, I have to give you a negative on that.
Okay. Council have any other questions before? Okay. So, with that said, after deliberation, the council is going to take staff's recommendation, with the potential of maybe enforcing up to a hundred dollars a day in fines. And is there a motion?
A motion to adopt the staff's recommendation for abatement.
I'll second.
Do we need to do a public comment before we do anything?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, public comment before we vote? No.
I didn't hear what you said.
Is there a public comment before?
No, I didn't hear what?
Oh, we're, the council, given your answer, the council will be taking staff's recommendation, with the possibility of enforcement of a hundred dollar fine. What, thank you.
Per day.
Per day.
Can I get a clarification of what you mean by staff recommendations?
The resolution that was presented in front of us to abate.
That's the motion. There's a motion on the table to approve that resolution, correct?
Correct.
And then, you're being notified that there may be a fine of a hundred dollars per day for inaction since the, right?
So, staff's recommendation, what we have in front of us, is the resolution to carry out the abatement.
Is that what you have as considered the items one through six?
What do, of the nuisance?
It's the resolution.
The resolution is including all of that.
The resolution includes those conditions, which need to be complied with as the order for abatement. So, that's, the resolution is an order to abate, and it includes those conditions in the order.
So, you're saying that you...
Please enter the podium, otherwise your voice isn't recorded.
That might be a good thing.
Okay, I just, I just need some clarification, because I, there's a lot of verbiage, a lot of stuff in forums, a lot of legalese, that, you know, you have to use your attorney or something to go through, which in case you are. But, I want to know from the standpoint that you're talking about, the notice that I've received in the letter dated February ninth, that's what we're talking about? And there was specifically items one through six that were being required to be done to satisfy the abate? Is that what we're talking about?
We're referring to a resolution that's included in the agenda packet, which includes the order for abatement. That's what the city council is considering adopting at this time.
I have a copy of the resolution, if you'd like that.
Yeah, because I haven't seen.
That's in the packet.
I haven't seen a packet.
This is the copy of the resolution that we will be voting on. Resolution eighteen dash fourteen.
Okay, then my next question then.
That itemizes, that answers your question, it itemizes all the issues.
Okay. And does this, does this have a length of time assessed to it?
Yes.
And what is that?
Let me scroll through.
Do we vote on the resolution and then talk about the timeline?
Sure. The order to abate is, includes a timeline of 10 days. And at this point, we're at the stage where the city council is making the motion. So I think there's no further comments at this time, so.
Okay, I don't think I'm still understanding.
So there was a letter sent.
We haven't voted anything yet, so we haven't determined anything yet. We have a motion that's been seconded to adopt the resolution as presented in the packet. So we need to vote on that and then we can tell the timeline and go forward with that.
No, but I think his question was, was he given it? Were you given, clarify your question about the timeline. What do you mean, from us now or before we got to where we're at right now?
Okay. I wrote a letter within the 15-day period of time after receiving my registered mail of a certain period of time to be able to abate with the possibilities of extensions of 90 days. What I'm wondering now is, is whatever this resolution is, and I have to put my glasses back on to read it because I haven't seen it, does this include a timeline? Or if not, what kind of timeline would we be looking at to abate the concerns that was addressed to me in the February 9th letter?
To summarize, in response, the resolution does not include a 90-day provision. It includes a 10-day provision.
Anyone in this room should know that this is totally impossible to do anything in 10 days, particularly given the inclement weather and we're in the middle of winter. I mean, do you not have a timeframe that puts us into the spring and summer where this all outside work?
The council has deliberated and based on the information that's presented, this is their, this is their recommendation.
And can that be reconsidered?
I think that when the council deliberated, they looked at the history of enforcement issues related to this property. So at this point, the city council appears ready to vote on the motion. So at this point, it's a matter of determining whether the motion is going to carry or whether another motion will need to be provided. And that's up to the city council to decide.
Based on the history as perceived?
Based on the testimony that was provided at this hearing, that's, which includes the history of the, which is included in the agenda packet.
Well, thank you.
I wanted clarification on the $100 fine per day. What is, maybe to describe that further? When does it start?
I think it was more, it was a reference to what's in the city code. So the goal would be to enforce the fines as per the Angels Camp City Code. I don't have the specific language up, but I can pull it up if you'd like. But it generally amounts to $100 per day. The exact timing, I'm not sure of when that timing starts, but it would be the intent to enforce the current code.
So, because I think it would be good to have an understanding of when that has started or when it starts.
Well, it says, in the, in the letter dated February 9th, it says that "The city may take several actions to secure compliance with the municipal code. These actions include, but are not limited to, the referral of the Calaveras County District Attorney for Criminal Prosecution against you, the imposition of administrative fines of up to $100 per day for each day the code violations persist on your property. The summary abatement of the nuisances you're creating by city officials, designings, designees, et cetera." So it's the $100 per day, every day after the 26th until action is-
The 26th of what?
Of February.
Of February. $100 per day since February 26th.
Right. And we're ignoring the November 9th letter because this February 9th superseded, if I understand.
That's correct.
Okay. The motion on the table?
I have a question.
Yes, you may come back. Yes.
You mentioned something relative since February 27th, did you say?
26th. I believe the letter says, the letter dated February 9th.
With a deadline of February 26th.
Okay. I guess I'm going to ask the council, how can someone comply to something where they don't even receive the letter till the 27th?
You were given the opportunity for a 90-day extension and we did not receive the 90-day, the request for the 90-day extension within the deadline.
I, I made my request within the 15 days of receiving the letter. I believe my letter was dated March 12th and picking up a letter on February 27th would be more than, more than 15 days that I responded within that timeframe of having notice. I guess the question is, how can one be expected to respond to something that they do not have?
It says 15 days within the date of the letter.
That is correct.
Yes. Which is February 26th.
I do understand that. But the letter was received on the 27th of February. How could I respond to something that I did not even receive? And it is known, it was known by the building department that that was the case. Because I had called, I called Steve and told him, when he called me, that I was contacting the post office and I had them hold the letter an extra day beyond what was supposed to be returned so that I could go and pick it up. I wasn't hiding from the letter.
But also on February 6th, staff called again to give you more time to let you know of the February 9th date that the letter was issued in case you had not received it, reminding you of the February 26th deadline.
Who did they talk to, Ms. Alendorf?
They left a voicemail.
I don't get voicemails. I hardly get phone calls out where we live.
If I can, if I can interject, I think this discussion might be better for a time when and if you receive an invoice for the fines to object and to fight those fines. But it's irrelevant, I think, as far as the resolution that's on the table.
I really respectfully, you know, disagree on that. Because I have been hanging in limbo in reality for 10 years on this. And I just keep hanging on, hoping that the fines won't happen and that I can get some stuff done and that the fines will be mitigated and not ever knowing.
There's two separate issues. Talking about potential fines, it says the city may. We haven't said we're going to levy these fines yet, but it says may fine. This is just, it's a, it's a declaration to you that this, it just basically referring to me what's in the letter. The letter says we may take these steps.
Okay.
Okay? So we may take these steps. And a lot of, a lot of, I think, what happens from here on in, we might dictate that. But I just want to let you know that that's a possibility. You know, we want to let you know in public that that's a possibility. Those fines are out there, among other avenues.
Well, are you, am I to understand or not be able to understand that before any of this would even be considered, that there would be this 90-day extension to get some of this stuff done?
Let me, let me keep going. I think, well, my argument, speaking freely, my argument is that there was not any effort made on your behalf to be granted the 90-day extension. It doesn't come automatically with a request within 15 days. It has to have certain actions tied to that request. Those actions were not there by your own, by your own testimony. So the 90-day extension has been denied and we're ready to vote on the resolution at this point.
Okay. So.
It was never requested.
It was requested in the letter.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize.
I requested the 90 days and I requested it in time. At the same time, this, not receiving this until the 27th and having only six working days of the 15 days from the 27th to the 12th of the month that I could even get out of my house, how can I be expected to do anything within six days outside of taking care of emergencies all over the place? I mean, this is, this is a worst-case scenario. I have not been humanly able to comply and do the requests, although I made all the submissions in a timely fashion. I got rid of a load of debris that, yeah, it's not much, but it was the very next day that I could get out before I was housed in for four straight days within five days of clearing before another five days of. I got out yesterday for the first time at 2:05. You know, I just, I'm asking, it does not seem fair to me that in complying with this the best that I can, that I would be imposed, you know, this amount of punishment.
So you're asking for the 90-day extension?
I'm asking for a 90-day extension, yes, now to get done what I can do within this 90 days and revisit this at that time if you believe that's necessary.
One option would be to let this current motion fail and to adopt a new motion to adjust the timeline from 10 days to 90 days.
It's my understanding that even if the motion goes through, there's, there'll be a significant amount of time in which Mr. Ashlock can perform. Is that true?
By default, yes, because the, after the 10 days expire, the next step would be to seek leave from the court for the order to abate. And that would depend on the judicial calendar and a notice motion. So the process for completing that would take several months. So that would be part of the timeline.
So it's like a de facto, you've got time to perform. We have a motion in a second.
So we have a motion on the table. Is there?
Dave?
Yeah.
I would comment that we put in an exact date so that we as staff know if you do see, that we know exactly what the timeline is and where that date is, whether it's May 12th, May 13th, so that after, that there's no, there's no, there's no, we didn't know, there's no, we're right here, we're all here in the same building, that we'd like to date specific so that we, that applicant knows that for whatever that date is, then that's what we do. So staff would recommend that you, if you do assign a 90, if you decide the 90-day, we'll get a date specific so that we can then take action if no action occurs.
I guess. Yeah, it's whether or not.
So given that there's a motion already on the table and stuck it in, we're going to have to go ahead with?
Well, there is a discussion period during the, after the motion's made. I just wanted to bring up one more thing, just throw out a thought. That's correct, right? Usually you have their discussion after the motion in a second.
Sure.
I would just think maybe not we should consider the 90-day extension and have a date. I'll just throw it out there and letting this motion fail.
I would-
I'd say we'll call the question.
You know, just a comment. It's, we're not talking about 90 days here. We're talking about years. And there is, it sounds like there's a, there's a margin in here for you to perform between the execution of the resolution and whatever the formal actions that take place after that. So if this passes and fails, we just encourage you to take whatever action you can in that window as opposed to us kicking this can down the road to a new starting point 90 days down the road.
I'll happily agree with Joe on that.
I guess my concern is the can that you'd think you'd be kicking down the road would be what?
The action specified in the resolution with a, with a date that has a performance in 10 days.
Well, the other thing that this would, would allow is, is someone to come in that has a bolder, greater plan with resources to do something with this that I cannot do. And that's what I would-
I'm just thinking that there's time for that to come to light in the order of business that would be generated with our passing this resolution.
And there is time of those few months besides the 10 days.
This is a public safety issue. Regardless of the ownership of the property, these things have to be mitigated. So it's not like someone can come along and say, well, we have this all grand new plan and we're not going to do any abatement. We're going to do something different. This is a safety, a public safety hazard.
And we have a responsibility to address it as a council.
Have any of you been around the load, the back of the load?
Yes, I have, over many years. And it has never, I've never, I, yes.
I drive past it every single day when I go to work and-
Scott called the, Scott called the question.
Yeah. So there's no further discussion.
Roll call?
Roll call?
Okay. Roll call.
Thank you.
Aye.
Oh, aye. Are we going in order like? Yeah.
Aye.
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 Bye-bye. Okay. Onto item number seven. Approval of Resolution 1812 approving the name change of Angels Oak Drive and Greenhorn Creek Drive to Angels Oak slash Greenhorn Creek Drive. Uh, deep hand.
All right. Try to get through all these items very quickly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the years, there basically, it's been more of our tourist population than our local population, but there's always been issues and complaints on trying to find Greenhorn Creek, Rollmark on all the GPS systems. Always comes up Angel Oaks, Greenhorn Creek is much farther down the road. The city kind of took some action, some small action, probably is about in the early, early 2000s where they just put a name, as in the photo, the name of Greenhorn Creek Drive under Angel Oaks, but that's technically not the official name. When we tried to, when we approached Caltrans, their, their response was that, well, Greenhorn Creek doesn't enter the, or doesn't access our highway. Angel Oaks does. And so to change the sign would require, at least in my eyes, we require the name of, change the name. There are, pursuant to our ordinance, all streets and roads shall be, shall be known by the same name for their entire length. And where a street or road changes direction by 90 degrees or a greater angle intended for extension, each direction shall be known by a different name. Of course, in this case, Greenhorn Creek, it does have some curves and ups and downs, but it's pretty much a straight road from Highway 4 all the way down to Smith Flat, south of Smith Flat. Staff is recommending that we, we change the name to basically Angel Oaks slash Greenhorn Creek Drive. It's, it wouldn't do anything in terms of name changes. The only thing that would benefit would be the green sign that says, when you come up on the green, when you come up on both sides, northeast and west, Caltrans, we would have to pay for a sign from Caltrans that says Angel Oaks, Greenhorn Creek Drive to the right. That's pretty much, that's pretty much it. There, in terms of financial impact, you know, the signs are anywhere between 650,000 bucks. I mean, I'm not quite sure. We haven't really, we haven't done a full estimate of what the sign would cost. But I think Caltrans has to put those in, those in, on the ones that are on the highway. If the council wanted to change the ones that are at Live Oak and I think, what's the other one? Live Oak Circle, Acorn, Acorn. There'd be some changes to just add another Greenhorn Creek Drive on those, on those poles, which would be our, which are costly. It would be less, it would be less money for that. So staff's just looking for a recommendation here. And again, that's an issue that came up, so.
Just a fine point, Dave, having to drive down that street on the way in. The signs closest to Smith Flat say Greenhorn Creek Road. The signs closer to the highway say Greenhorn Creek Drive. And there are, I think- And there are, I think, three or four other streets with signs that would, I guess, would have to have both. So it's more like seven or eight signs. The city would be on the hook for that many?
Yeah, for the, just for the, yeah, for the street signs, right.
Okay, but you, but you're in agreement that because of this having the same name for the entire length?
Yes.
We'd have to change...
Well, the official name was Greenhorn Creek Drive. That was the official name. When the map, when the final map came in in 1996, it wasn't Greenhorn Creek Road, it was Greenhorn Creek Drive.
But, but you would change all that with this renaming, so that all of those signs would say the same.
Yeah, and there's no, there's no financial impact to any residents because both projects, both projects had conditions on them that there'd be no buildings that face, faced the road, so either Greenhorn Creek Drive or Angel Oaks. So, and in fact, when in two, in 1990, or no, 2004, when Ron Davis proposed his 27 units, he actually had a little side street that went into his division. There was no buildings that faced Angel Oaks Drive, so, and there are conditions from the, from the, his original subdivision that also states that there'll be no, so there's no, there's no financial burden to residents to change names and all that kind of stuff, so, in terms of that.
So, Dave, the purpose of this is to help ease the confusion that, that a lot of travelers who are trying to go to Greenhorn Creek or to Worldmark, they have, they, they drive right by because they see Angel Oaks Drive there first. Is there a reason why we're not just calling it Greenhorn Creek Road to make it simple for people out of town to see the G first and say, oh, that must be Greenhorn, instead of seeing an A first and say, oh, that must not be it?
Well, I mean, in the past, there have been issues with Angel Oaks Drive. In, when the, the project originally came in, there were issues between the property owners and, and the property owner of Angel Oaks. He wanted Angel Oaks Drive, that's what they wanted to name the road, and that's what, he also owns the road, so he owns Angel Oaks, actually, we have an easement on Angel Oaks, he owns the ground underneath it, a V title, so we'd have to go to that property owner and, and if that's something that he would want to do for his road, even though we have an easement on it, to change the name to Greenhorn Creek Road. We did, we, we wanted, we just thought that it would be easier with all the GIS and all the other stuff that already have Angel Oaks Drive, it'd be fairly easy just to, just to add the Greenhorn Creek Drive, and it's mainly for the two, to be honest with you, it's mainly for the two signs on the, on the highway. I mean, I mean, we're not...
And you're saying that that can cost the city $2,000?
No, I think that, that Caltrans has to pay for those signs, for, for the signs on the, on the highway, Caltrans would pay for those. We would just have to resubmit, we would just have to pay for the street signs.
That is our goal, is to submit to the, to Caltrans the request. When we made the initial inquiry and request to change the sign, that's when they pointed out the city council had never formally recognized and approved the street name accordingly, so they would only sign the highway as we had locally adopted it. This is the first step, we'll follow up with Caltrans, but it's our goal that Caltrans should fund the state highway signs, and then if that doesn't materialize, we'll seek alternatives through the council of government so that that's not a general fund expressed.
Okay, and I do know that that is an issue of wayfinding for Worldmark, so if, maybe if you feel a letter of support for the change of the name written from their corporation to Caltrans to support that, or, you know, whichever...
That would be great, to let them know that, from Caltrans' perspective, you know, that they want to know that this isn't just a local preference, that it's actually really about safety and the, through traffic, and I've, I've heard that people often miss that, they pull off to the shoulder. We've also had the request for a, a street light to be put there that, for safety reasons. Caltrans did request that I provide them with access to the names and list of businesses or individuals that support these two projects, so if anyone is interested in providing a letter of support for a street light and a name change, I would definitely welcome it and get it to the appropriate person at Caltrans.
So if the public were to do that, they would turn it directly to City Hall?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like to just for Greenhorn Creek Road, just make it simple, because having the two names, I don't know how it's going to solve any confusion, and we're talking about driving to, to our largest revenue centers.
At this point, whatever the council's direction, we will have to implement whatever the council's votes on. That was just a recommendation to kind of make it easier. From staff's perspective, it, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't affect us one way or the other, but we'll, we'll implement whatever the council wants to go with.
So you gotta go to Ron for this?
Yeah.
We're gonna have to, we'll, we'll...
I did speak to Mr. Davis myself. He is supportive of the Angels Oaks slash Greenhorn Creek Drive. There was no mention of an alternative, i.e. Greenhorn Creek Drive slash Angels Oaks, or just changing the name. I want to be respectful to a history that does exist between the two developments, so what was represented to him was staff's recommendation in this item. And I think if there were to be an alternative, I would recommend we contact him and let him know the discussion before we adopt it in its final form. There's no hurry on this, so I would recommend we just extend that courtesy to him as a property owner and developer.
So I can, just so I can understand that, so you want to change it from, remove Angel Oaks Drive completely? Okay, I don't think, I won't be supporting that.
Like Melissa says, not a mandate, it would be a discussion to have with Mr. Davis.
Yeah, I know, I just think that we should consider what staff presented in front of us, but if council feels that they want to continue the discussion, we can move this to another agenda, and Melissa can talk to Mr. Davis.
Personally, I'd prefer to just vote on this and get moving forward on it, just because I think the wheels of Caltrans might go slowly in regards to reach, you know, redoing the signs, and we want to make sure that those signs get going ASAP, you know, summertime's coming.
Do you think changing the signs makes...
Out on the street, out on Highway 4?
To Angel Oaks, Greenhorn Creek, you think that eliminates the confusion that motorists have now?
Yeah. I pull over many times to cars that are pulled over on Angel Oaks Drive, roll my window down and say, are you looking for Worldmark? And they say, yes, and I say, keep going. So I think that if both of those street names were on the highway signs, then everyone would recognize it. I know that, you know, I personally live in Angel Oaks, so when I tell people, I say, look for the Angel Oaks sign, so they know that, you know, it's like, so I think that you have to consider, there's, yeah, there's both.
Because both.
Yeah, there's both developments, yeah.
People are voting for both.
Right, it's, and I just, like you say, I think we should, let's, let's get moving.
Okay. Any other comment?
I can support this the way it is. I think, you know, we gotta consider that the people in Angel Oaks have lived there for 25 years, and they're telling people, you know, pay attention to Angel Oaks, and if that disappeared from the highway sign, that'd be a problem. So I think the two, the two names would be, I think it's a good compromise and a good solution, and it keeps things moving along.
Any other public comment?
Debbie Pawnee, representing Destination Angels Camp. So this was discussed at our, our board meeting last Thursday, and we supported the name change from Angels Oaks slash Greenhorn Creek Drive, making either drive or road the same, but from the Highway 4 corridor, the Caltrans sign is difficult for people to maneuver to find Greenhorn, and we hear that many a times from the folks at Worldmark, the management, both at Worldmark and Greenhorn Creek. And this was actually a request of Greenhorn Creek to the city administrator when we went on tour, that it's often difficult to try to describe everything. We also found during the discussion at our meeting that we have people dropping by our office because they've missed it, they don't see the Greenhorn Creek anywhere on Highway 4, as they're looking for the Worldmark or the golf course. And Lisa Bolton from the Visitors Bureau mentioned the same thing, people end up downtown wanting to know where this is because they don't see the Greenhorn Creek off of Highway 4. So in the perfect world, it would be nice to be all one road, one name, but it wasn't developed that way. There are very two distinct subdivisions with many residents in both, and many times they are referring to one or the other, so we thought this was a nice compromise. And hopefully it doesn't screw up GPS and GIS and all those other things, but at least coming off Highway 4, having the two names mentioned on the green Caltrans signs would be most helpful to our tourists. Thank you.
Any other public comment? And then we want to stick with drive?
Yes.
Yes, yes. I just want to make sure that I...
It is, the, the question was clarification, it is appropriately drive, not road?
Yes.
And so then those street signs are mislabeled potentially?
Okay, okay. Okay, is there a motion to, for Resolution 1812, approving the name change of Angels Oak Drive and Greenhorn Creek Drive to Angels Oak, Greenhorn Creek Drive?
I'm in.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Clarification? I, I see that Angel Oaks Drive and Greenhorn Creek Drive in the title of the resolution says to Angels Oaks, Greenhorn Creek Drive, is there an S on?
No. No S. Angel Oaks. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, David, can I approval of 1813, a resolution approving the contract between the City of Angels and Drake Halligan and Associates in the amount of $198,357.32 for the completion of the Plumbimimay engineering for Murphy's Grade sidewalk project.
Madam Mayor, staff at this time would like to pull this item. We, we've been in conversation with Caltrans, and there are some procurement requirements that we need to obtain first before we can issue an award or contract, so, working with Calaveras Council of Governments and State Staff, hopefully we'll be able to bring this item back to you on, at your April 3 meeting, so we'd like to pull this item.
Just a question, since it's here?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Where's the funding for the construction for this?
Through congestion management, air quality funds, local transportation funds, regional transportation infrastructure funds.
It's there?
It's there, we just don't know the total, we've got, we've got money allocated to it, we just need the PE to design to see how much it's going to cost, so it might be additional construction dollars, but at this point, we're not sure.
Okay, so that item is pulled. Okay, item C, authorization to approve a contract between the City of Angels and Augustine Planning Associates for the month of April through June.
Okay. All right, here we go. As staff is aware, or if council is aware, I've tendered my letter of resignation back in early, early March, and I will be, my last day of work here is with March 30th, my last full-time day of work. And so with that, over the last couple of years, there's been, you know, increased, significant increase in development projects, transportation projects, and just general planning inquiries in general. Augustine Planning Associates has had extensive experience with the city, and over the last 15 years completing planning and environmental work. They were actually the city planner back in 2002. The four, 2004? Yeah, so around 2002, when the city didn't have, didn't have a full-time planner, she's got a lot of experience within the city. And so looking at what, Amy and I have kind of talked about what's on the horizon, what's, what projects we're working on now, and what, what type of, what we would call just general planning duties in terms of what's going on, you know, property inquiries, zoning questions, all those types of things, she's recommended that 64 hours a month for the months of April, May, and June, which would basically constitute about 16 hours a week, eight hours in the office, and then eight hours off-site work for, for off-site, and then if there's additional, and there's also additional time set aside for planning commission, city council, and some contingency. Basically, looking at this, of course, we got our budget reports before I did this report, so I apologize for, I'm not quite sure I'm accurate, I was going off of just budgeted numbers, not actual numbers, when I put the, when I put the salaries together, but just kind of, I went over the distribution of my salary, where it's been distributed, and basically kind of what's left for the end of the year. And based on what the total savings, based on what I came up with, there's more than enough salary savings to absorb the cost of this contract of the $22,600. Like I said, I know these numbers are based on budget, not actuals, so one fund could be hit harder than the other fund, meaning depending on workload throughout the year, you know, some of that distribution might have changed a little bit, but that's something that, that will be figured out as, as that goes. But I know there's approximately somewhere in the budget about 100 and some, 100, or about 60 some odd thousand dollars left, or $33,000 left for, for work. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm sure you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions, Amy's here, if you have any questions on her, on her contracts, and you're happy to answer any questions you can.
Does council have any questions? Any other public comment?
Dave, can you just maybe give an update on the list of projects that you're working on? Aside from the transportation, I know the transportation project list is pretty extensive.
Well, we're working on all the priorities that the council set aside in the 1718 year, we're working, like with the golf course ordinance, the Pacific Plan Ordinance, we've got some rezoning that still needs to be completed, we've got Tractor Supply, we're working with developers on the Dan Panell property near the post office, we're working with property owners at the Utica Hotel, we're still doing, those projects are all still in play, as well as just the general planning, sign permits, home ocs, you know, approving business licenses and all those types of things, the general planning duties that the city is doing, so there's more than enough, more than enough stuff there. I mean, I, I should probably put a comprehensive list, but that's about seven or eight just right off the top of my head that, that we've been working on over the last year.
There's no further question? Is there a motion to approve? I read it. Yes, and then Melissa, do I need to do it again?
No, you are, you are.
Okay, okay. No, no, it's okay, I thought I missed. Except...
I was looking, I was lost in the numbers. They don't add up, that's okay.
I, I did recognize, we did have, I did have a note, and the note didn't get updated to the memo, but the difference was vacation buyout. So we'll be buying out a percent of the vacation accrual, so that would be the difference in vacation buyout.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Um, Dave again?
Congratulations, I think.
Another contract amendment, or actually a contract amendment in the amount of $6,930, regarding the Tractor Supply project.
Yes. After, after going, after talking with Amy and working with the applicants of the Tractor Supply, there could be hours, hours of the week that exceed that 16 hours that she has in the office with, with the environmental that we're working on, there's some real sensitive issues with Caltrans and, and Native Americans that we're working on in that project. Also, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of hand-holding with the applicant on this project in terms of trying to get it to the council as fast as we can, as expeditiously as we can, and which could, which would require Amy to go outside that, that easily go outside that 16 hours, could potentially go, I should just say, potentially go outside that 21 hours, and we wanted to make sure that Tractor Supply, since that's a critical project for the city at this point, that we didn't want my leaving to in any way have that slow down. And so we decided that the additional contract for that, for just that project, which would include Amy's environmental work that she's already working on right now, and getting that project through the entitlement process, so that's why we did the additional contract for here, for this project. So with that, are there any questions or any...
And my understanding is that there is no impact to the general fund?
Correct, because this project, because this project is a deposit-based, and so the planning services that are provided are based on the deposit, so that was the other reason, too, that we didn't really want to mix apples and oranges, and so it just, it was easier to do it this way.
Any other questions from council? Public comment? Okay, is there a motion to approve? Oh, go ahead, yes, oh, sorry, I missed it.
That's okay. Debbie Pawnee with Destination Angels Camp, and we just would encourage you to approve staff's recommendation in this regard. We feel it's very important that we have somebody that is detail-oriented and keeping on top of this particular project and moving it through our planning commission and city council. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Is there...
Is there a motion?
I move approval of this contract.
Second.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations again.
Okay, um.
You'll find out.
We'll tell you later.
We're wondering, we're wondering why you're still sitting there.
Um, okay.
Before you take it back, come on.
Approval of the agreement, uh, amendment between the City of Angels and Condor Earth Technology, um, in the amount of forty thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, um, to complete the groundwater monitoring and, uh, reporting, my, Mr. Mace.
Okay, I know you got a pretty, pretty large agenda tonight, so I'll make this really brief. In the past seven years, the city has used Condor Earth Technologies to monitor the groundwater out of the spray field. This monitoring is to see if the treated effluent is staying on site, not affecting the neighboring properties. Um, the past monitoring shows that the effluent is staying underneath the spray field, so the spray field is actually working pretty good. So basically, all we're trying to do is continue the monitoring, and this is an existing firm that we're using, and this is an extension of an existing agreement. So, real short, is there any questions about that?
It's seventeen, eighteen budget related?
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Uh, public comment? Then, okay, is there a motion to approve the amendment?
I'll move it. I'll move it, I'll second whatever.
Move by, you're second by. All in favor?
Aye.
Who is the second by? Veronica?
Okay, moving on. My gosh. Okay, um, authorization to advertise the Greenhorn Creek and City of Angels recycle, recycle water improvement.
Okay, so again, so again, I'll try to make it real short. So what's before you is to approve the advertisement of the Greenhorn Creek and City of Angels Recycle Water Improvements Project. And what the project is, is basically adding powered valves and radios to quickly down, shut down the effluent line in case there's a break in the line. Uh, these improvements will help avoid the situation that occurred last year when a pipe break occurred, and we spilled a lot of the treated effluent. However, this, this, this project's a little different. This is a joint project between the Greenhorn Creek Golf Course and the city. And, uh, while it's really difficult to predict cost on something like this, I think our maximum contribution is gonna be about forty-four thousand dollars. Um, basically that, I can give you really short presentations because it's a long agenda item, but are there any questions on this, this project?
No. Any public comment? Okay, is there a motion?
Move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um, and now on to presentation of year-to-date financials.
Do you need to take a short break before we start?
Um, we can if you want, yeah.
Five.
Yeah. We're gonna take a five-minute break, so you can shut up.
So, um, the county structure that I'm familiar with, and obviously the city budgeting structure's different, but what would happen is, um, in that situation, we would decrease net city cost into the previous budget year. So if they had a peak in surplus revenue from budget development fees, then we would decrease their net city costs going into the, the subsequent next year. Because then that's additional revenue realized within their budget, um, and so then it decreases your general fund contribution.
So unless capital-intensive departments, there would be less incentive to increase revenue?
There are some departments that, um, just by their, their operations, um, they will be general fund-dependent, just based on that. There's, they don't have a lot of alternatives, so we recognize that. Um, but then there are others that can work to secure grants or alternative revenue. The case that we always get into is that there's capital revenue, there's not, um, operating revenue. So that's gonna challenge everyone, I think. Um, but again, these are kind of just conversations we're having internally in the office. I think our goal, uh, this year is going to be getting a budget, um, getting budget workshops by the first of June, getting a budget approved by July first. Um, and I think that that's a good place to start. And then depending on how this year begins to close, how we'll handle a structural deficit that we've carried year after year after year, um, without guarantee of increasing general fund reserve. So from my perspective, part of that strategy is potentially putting a limit on general fund contribution. There's a general fund contribution to departments, and anything beyond that has to be controlled either through cost or additional revenue. Cause the general fund is not growing like our expenses are growing.
Okay, the expenditure schedule is, that's the thirty-three percent.
Got it.
It, it, city officials looks bad, but it's really not because it's not very much money. And it's, it's an essential, we need a city council, and they need to have the support that they need. And if we go over a little bit, then we go over a little bit. It's one of those things that, it's part of the territory. City Attorney? Little behind in getting their bills to us. We just got January. So this is really a number that's through December. Engineering, their expenditures are lower than expected. We're not quite sure yet. I just, I don't know. And I think that's, that's a product of me only being here nine. I've, I'm more than willing to say, I don't know, but I'll find out for you. So we'll get an answer on the engineering. Finance and administration is at forty-four percent, forty-five percent, should be at thirty-three percent because they're almost exactly eighty-twenty in terms of expenses. The reason we're not is twofold. Number one, we're down a person, and number two, the funds that were budgeted, in addition to the budget itself, the amendment made, um, the seventy-eight thousand, yeah, seventy-eight thousand dollars, which was spread over wastewater, water, and, um, the general fund. It was basically structured to say, you're gonna have Mary, and you're gonna have Melissa, and they're gonna get, be, they'll be paid right along the same line. So you doubled up on city administrator salaries. Julie was gonna be paid, and I was gonna be paid while Julie was here. And when Julie left, the new city finance director would be paid, and I would be paid until I left, because she was up to speed. That section of it is gonna get pushed out toward the end of the year. Will we need all of this money? Probably not, but it's not gonna be as rosy as it looks.
So one of the other things I think to point out, when you look at engineer and finance and administration, even though that that's coming in under, it doesn't mean that there's necessarily savings. Those hours can be applied to other funds. So it's based on our payroll and the split. So if I'm, as the administrator, spending more time on road projects, then I'm billing that. If I'm spending more time on water, wastewater, then I'm billing that. So it's decreasing the reliance on the general fund. And so that's where, from a department perspective, it's difficult to know what we cost, because then those costs get spread out amongst different funds. So Dave, engineering could be low here in the general fund, but he could be charging higher in another fund, water, wastewater. Um, so, so that's what we mean by a depart, full department picture. Um, so you could see how those costs are breaking out.
So, just a question about city attorney. Um, so these numbers don't reflect any billing from Church World White, cause we just got January.
That's correct.
But they do reflect all of the billing from Derek Cole's firm?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. We got his last bill, I think, two months ago, and it was paid.
Community support, again, I'll get back to you on that. We're not absolutely sure why that's not thirty-three percent. Museum, um, the museum, as I said, their revenue is down, but they're doing a very good job of managing their personnel costs, so that they're not cutting into the reserves or not increasing the deficit that we have budgeted. So they're just doing a good job of managing their operation. Fire, they're down a person. Is it one person or two? They're just down a person, right? Fire?
Yes. But I believe that position has already been removed from the budget.
We'll double-check that for you. The strike team, if we don't go to a fire, we don't have to pay the strike team. The strike team is not somebody who just sits around and waits for a fire. They get paid when we, we go to a fire. And we pay them, and then Caltrans reimburses us. Um, and I was asked a question the other day, well, does that mean we make money on strike team? And the answer is, yeah, kinda. Uh, what happens with strike team reimbursements is that we pay the strike team. We ask for reimbursement for the strike team individuals, the firefighters, and then we get a reimbursement for the truck itself, the operation of the truck that they go down on. That is short-term revenue for us, net revenue for us. We also charge an administrative fee. That is real revenue for us. The reason I say that the, the truck reimbursement is short-term revenue for us is that, that, that truck's gonna drop dead one of these days. Fortunately, there's a lot of money out there for grants for replacement of that truck. And if we're lucky, and if we do a good job, yeah, that, that will end up being permanent revenue for us. Police, police, police is, they're not only down a person, they're down a sergeant. And that's the major source of their expenditure shortfall. Public Works is, it's not a big enough number so that if the difference between fifty-four percent and thirty-three percent is earth-shaking. Now we move on to water and wastewater. What we did here was we gave you the biggest funds that we have. We have several other funds that we can get to you the next time we do this, and we'll just do a, um, more complete presentation. Hopefully on a night when you don't have forty-seven other things on. Okay, wait, wa, wastewater, sewer. Um, their revenue is, okay, this presentation right here is, there's the budget, there's the actual, and they should be thirty-three, this, this should be at thirty-three percent.
Mike, can you advance your slides so that the audience?
You betcha.
Thank you.
Why would any of the numbers be thirty-three? They should be, they should be sixty-six percent, right? Cause you're talking about eight months out of twelve still, unless that's remaining.
That's remaining, that's what's remaining.
So we have a budget, and we have actual.
We've collected sixty-six percent. And so there's thirty-three percent remaining to be collected. And these funds are primarily from utility billings.
And wastewater. I was backing worse, what? So we've collected only thirty-four percent of the, of the, or actual's only thirty-four percent of budget?
The remain, but that percentage is the remainder.
That's the remainder, okay.
Right. The expenditures are under budget, and if you turn to the next slide, Mike, we can talk about what? We actually think that the revenue may be fifty percent, but fifty thousand dollars better than the budget said it's gonna be. The major differences between, um, the budgeted expenditures and what we believe is remaining is, first of all, payroll, and we believe that that payroll will be expended when we get to the end of the road. We also have a sewer mainline replacement program that we haven't spent any money on yet. We probably won't spend it all this year. We'll just carry it forward to the next budget. Sixty, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars worth of depreciation is another accounting thing. Normally people do depreciation at the end of the year. We're gonna do it on a monthly basis from now on, just so we can give you these presentations and don't have to explain that.
Appreciation has nothing to do with cash flow, though, right?
Appreciation, nothing to do with cash flow, no.
I'm not sure how helpful it is to have it in our finances, because like I said, it is an accounting thing, it just confuses, to me, it just confuses the issue. So was it, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand, where, how's it playing in the numbers? You have to figure out how it plays in the numbers if it included at all. That's kind of an audit thing, I would think, and not, not even a budget.
It really is.
Yeah, so it's not, we, we don't want that in our budget, right? Cause it just confuses the budget, by putting depreciation in there?
I guess you could do it either way. Um, this, this is, for the purest accountant, you'd wanna have it in there. For a presentation like this, you wouldn't.
But we're, we're trying to do our budgets, though.
Yeah.
You don't wanna have to always be figuring out, well, what's appreciation, appreciation, I mean depreciation and amortization, we don't want those in there, right?
No.
Okay.
You can, but again, it's a, accountants love to see this kind of thing.
Yeah, the accountant's always having it at the end of the year, and it's kind of cool, cause you get a tax write-off, but for a thing like this, and cash flows, it's too confusing to throw that in there, I think.
Yeah, it's very, and that's very easy to put it in, or leave it out, and, uh, when we budget, what we'll do is we'll just put it below the, below the line, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, keep it simple, please.
Okay, uh, let's go to water. Their revenue is at twenty-six percent. I have a question on this that I need to answer for myself. That should be thirty-three percent. Should be the same as wastewater, because, because it's being funded the same way. It may be that we didn't budget the revenue very well. But that's something that's, I need to, I need to figure out.
Can you advance your slide, please?
I can, thank you.
Yeah, we need to either change the column heading, or, or reverse those numbers.
We're on water, I think.
Yeah, the percentage, the actual is like seventy-five percent of budget, and you've got twenty-six, but you're saying that's remaining to collect, but that's not, has nothing to do with the numbers that are there?
Yes.
So the percentage, the third column, we can ignore relative to the first two columns, in a way, because it?
That's accurate. We've, we've got four hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue to get.
And that's the twenty-six percent?
Yeah, exactly.
Got it.
Exactly. Expenditures, as you can see, are significantly lower than anticipated. And if we go to the next slide, what's up with that percentage? Ninety-six, what's that mean? That means that there's ninety-six percent remaining to be spent.
But that's not right.
Not really.
Yeah.
Those numbers are, you got something wrong?
We've got it, we've got something wrong there.
Yeah, it's probably more like 50 or something. Okay.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, of course.
It's the old calculator I have.
I think it's just that late. Poor Mike's given this presentation three times.
Okay, revenue, we're looking at maybe $100,000 over budget. And I think that's a conservative number. So what's the difference between budgeted and actual expenditures? The first one is the same as the other one, budgeted payroll, and we believe that that payroll will be spent. We've got $130,000 worth of depreciation, which, at the next presentation, will be below the line. We've got, as a matter of fact, you just discussed the contract for this $198,000. At the point I put this together, I believed that we would probably expend $100,000 of that this year, but it looks like we won't because of our friends at Caltrans. That was the item that was pulled from the agenda.
Just out of curiosity, what's the depreciation schedule? What are we depreciating, and what schedule are they on? Pipe different than pumps? Is it all on a different schedule, or is it just one massive account?
Oh, no, no, yeah, the, behind those numbers are spreadsheets that identify all of the major assets that we have, the pipes, the pumps, the wastewater station, all of those kinds of things. And depending on what it is, they're depreciated at different rates over different periods of time.
So pipe is 100 years? How long do you depreciate pipe?
I have no idea. I'll find that out for you, though.
Well, I'm just curious.
No, it's a good, it's a good question, because I don't know the answer. I know that in, I was going to say, normal company, private sector kind of stuff, there are different rates for buildings and roads and all of those kinds of things, different rates for computers and tables and all of that. We can get you a quick presentation on that at one of your meetings.
Can't wait. Let's do it.
And then we'll put, then we'll put depreciation below the line.
Depreciation's a big deal.
And we'll never show it to you.
Bring samples.
Bring samples.
And then another $60,000 in capital replacement that we haven't spent yet.
Nothing matches, so I get no response.
Last but not least are, is the reserve schedule, which I will forward to. I'll go the right way. If you remember from the financial segment presentation, the unrestricted reserves in the general fund were $972,757. We approved a budget for 1718 of $103,199. Added to that is the $78,000, and you can see the way it's distributed here, and there's another piece that goes to roads. And then the $65,000, bringing you to $197,719 deficit in our budget as it stands now.
So Mike, can you, I get nervous when I see spreadsheet calculations, and they don't add up, and there's plug numbers put in at different places, that it's, and the 197,719, I can't reconcile that on the first page or any other page, and I'm confused. It looks like according, the budget had us, I'm tired, let's see, the budget had us, it looks like losing about 200, or 199 plus about 9, about 208. You're estimating 206. This says 197. Why are the numbers not matching, or why, where were we off?
So, when we presented the 199 on the budget, and then the actual projected on the general fund summary in 2000, 191, and then we took him through this exercise of the 15 and 7. So he's just looking to find those numbers represented somewhere on this final screen.
It's not big dollars, but whenever there's a discrepancy, I mean, somewhere in the software, somewhere in the spreadsheet, something's not adding up right, and that's usually a big red flag.
Yeah, I think what we're, what we're ending up with is, we have this piece of information, and we have this piece of information, and they don't jive in terms of where they came from. God, I didn't even understand that myself.
So the source numbers for these displays, or these reports, they're not drawn from the same place, they're drawn from different areas?
No, no, yes. This schedule, this schedule right here?
Input somewhere is not correct, and import error.
Yeah, this, this schedule right here is saying, "We know what the reserve was at the end of last year."
Yeah.
And we know the budget that was approved was $103,000. And then we added $29,000 to it, and then we added another $65,000 to it, which says the budget deficit is now $197,000.
That's just the budget. So that should match page one, that says 199. I mean, it's close, but again, it's not, something's fudged somewhere.
The budget.
So you have 199 on the general fund?
Under budget.
And then we come up with 197 on?
Round up to 198, not 199.
Yeah, so somewhere you got in your spreadsheet, there's some number that's not incorrect, that's incorrectly placed, and I don't know how it spreads out, and it makes?
Okay, you're talking, you're talking about the 199 on the schedule that is the general fund summary?
The budgeted use fund should match the current budget as adjusted.
That's correct.
And they don't, so that's where I'm?
Oh, I see, you're, it's off $1,000?
Yeah, $1,000, yeah.
Yeah, the 199 compared to the 197.
Again, it's not the dollar amount, so the fact that they're different is where I'm looking for an explanation as to why they're different.
I understand. The normal answer to this is, it's rounding.
It rounded past the next logical number, though, or below the, however you want to think of it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's 199 here, it's 198 here.
Right. So I guess what I would challenge you to do is go back and find the discrepancies in those two numbers, why, why did it happen? Because there's something that's not right. And I don't know if it manifests itself differently somewhere else in some other report. And I know last year, we all said we found $200,000 magically, and that we didn't have this, and these magic numbers are what drive me nuts. And I just want to make sure we're getting rid of our magic numbers.
Understand. We will get an answer for you.
Thank you.
Does it round up all of the numbers, though? Does it round up a multiple, or just, just this one is supposed to be rounded up? The current budget as adjusted, you know, said rounded up to 198. I was just wondering if it rounded up other numbers to come up with that 199 number. Well, I don't know if you know what I'm saying, but I'm.
Yeah, it's altogether possible.
Okay.
But we will find out exactly what it is. Because we don't want any magic numbers either. Magic numbers are so hard to explain.
Yeah, this, we have another one, that's on page two of the next, so, that's 199,438.
Which would round down to 199.
Where is it?
Page two of the detail there.
General fund, budget versus actual, as of 228, which shows the budget on 199,438 negative, which matches, it rounds down, which matches the very front page.
Right.
And that doesn't match, then, this page. So?
It's off the $1,000 or $1,200 bucks.
Something is suspect with this page, it looks like.
Yeah, we'll look into the 197, the $1,200 difference. Yeah, we will look into that.
Sure.
And find out how we came up with that.
It, that kind of thing happens, and we need to, we need to be more diligent in doing that, but when you're getting numbers from two different sources, that can happen.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't.
It shouldn't, right.
And we'll just be more diligent to figure out what to do. And that's, you've seen the rest of the package, and it's just amazing detail of the numbers we just looked at. And that, unless you have any more questions?
No, thank you very much.
We're still alive at 9 o'clock.
All very exciting.
Thank you for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any public comment? Just because I have to say that.
Okay, so we will go back, and we are going to, for the council, for clarity, update the column with the percentages appropriately, and we'll put a disclaimer as to what those percentages are, and then we will reconcile the $1,200 difference in, is that amount identified? Is there any other information we could provide to you? And we'll email those out as soon as we have them.
Thank you. Thank you for putting that together.
Thank you.
Okay, on to consolidated staff report. Are there any questions from the council for the, for staff?
I just had a question for Dave on that power failure problem. Does that system not have a backup power?
Yeah, it has backup power, and that kicked in, but that, I'm tired, too. All the motors are controlled, the motor control on the SBRs, how do I say this without getting too jargant? Our strategic biological reactors have motors on them, the motor controls are variable, variable frequency drives. Those all tripped, and so they had to get to them in order to reset them. It's a complicated process. And I actually was wrong in the report on the settling, they actually just put a lot of thick sewage into the filters and put a hard crust over them.
Yeah, but by definition, if you've got a backup system that doesn't back up?
When the power went out, it tripped the VFDs, and the VFDs, they had to be reset manually. And so it took a while.
And that's how it works every time the power goes out?
Well, it did this time. And that's one of the things we need to figure out why it's happening.
Okay.
Any other question?
I'd like to hear about how that gets fixed, you know, I mean, we have power outages here pretty regularly.
Yeah, it's a big deal. That's why we have generators out there, and we're trying to avoid stuff like this.
Okay.
Any other question? Public comment? Nope, okay. Council, council report, and I will start to my last council member.
I think you're a reporter.
Council member, are there?
I attended a meeting last night.
LAFCO, yes.
For Linda, and it was, had to be the world's shortest meeting, in like 35 minutes, 40 minutes or something, pretty quick you were there, so that's about it for me.
Yeah, I attended the Destination Angels Camp meeting, and also the Yummy Ha Ha Grand Opening.
Yeah.
Ice cream's great, you gotta try it. And then also the Aqua Mixer that was right next door. And then I went over and listened to the Republicans' candidate forum, and that was interesting. And I think that's about it.
I also attended LAFCO, and we had a presentation last night on agricultural land preservation and tools for cities and counties to utilize when considering annexation, which is pretty informative. I think I forwarded on to Melissa. And then also for council members, as well as staff, next month, there's the Legislative Action Day, which is on a Wednesday, I think it's the second week of April. Local government goes down to Sacramento, and we have sit-downs with our local representative at the state of California. So if you're interested in going, there is a reservation process to do that, but all elected, local elected and staff are welcome to attend that.
What's the date?
I think it's April 18th or 19th. It's a Wednesday. I've got to look it up again, but just for pre-planning ahead.
The 18th is a Wednesday.
Okay, so that would be the date, and it's through the League of California Cities. It's a good opportunity to get around, and if you need to, go visit Doug's office. And that's all I have to report, calendar.
Okay, tomorrow morning, IRWMA Advisory Committee meeting at 9:00 AM at TUD offices. There's a 10:00 AM COG Technical Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow, and?
Mark upon?
Hold on, thank you. I thought I was the Nazi here. Okay, back to that. 9:00 AM for IRWMA at the TUD offices, 10:00 AM COG Tac Board Meeting at the Board of Supervisors. And the 27th, Tuesday, the 27th, at 5:30 is UWPA. And then we are back here for council on April 3rd.
The motion to adjourn.
Moved. Second.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye.